As you can see, you signed most of those before. I guess whoever put them out, they want them on their sheet versus the other sheet. And that's how they gave them to us. Like we give the stock again, I'm like, who signed this?
It's amazing how they send a different accepting my sheet.
You still like her from okay?
Got your signs ordered for about you.
Okay.
They're gonna mark them up.
Good deal. See, did you ever check on it? Stop saying that. The lady you live around.
Yeah, she called her, told her, she told me.
On the western or whatever.
Western?
We don't even get on that one, but you know where it is. That's there, that little more. It's in the western. Yeah, I was saying about that three west side. I was looking at that.
Oh, right there by the. It's down to the intersection?
Yeah, at the dead end right there. There's not so there, but ladies over there.
We have a speed bump there, right?
No, y'all shouldn't have speed bump on western, lady. What?
No, on the street down to.
Yeah, I think they were talking about from one of those boulevard, all the con that stretch. You know, I will be in the neighborhood of Times Square, that road western. Going driving to con, Mark's, I think it might be Mark's Road, that tees into western. I think it's south side of the west, western, I probably have a speed bump too, but they were talking about flying down western in that area.
So they want, all they gotta do.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, that'll work, yeah, western, yep, sounds
Hammond City Council Public Hearing Agenda, November twenty eighth, twenty twenty three, five thirty P M., roll call, please.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Divatario.
Present.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Public hearing, none. Hammond City Council Regular Session Agenda, November twenty eighth, twenty twenty three, five thirty P M., roll call, please.
Councilman Andrews.
Present.
Councilman Divatario.
Present.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Present.
Councilman Leon.
Present.
Councilman Wells.
Our prayer.
Most gracious, loving Father, we thank you on this evening. We give you glory, we give you honor, we give you praise on today, Father God, just thanking you for who you are. Thanking you, Father God, as we end the month of Thanksgiving, but we know that every day is the day of Thanksgiving, as we enter into the month of the gift given, of the best gift that was given to us by the birth of your darling son, Jesus, who lived and died just for us, and we are just eternally grateful for that. Father God, we thank you for helping strengthen our body, we actually continue to guide us, keep us together right now, Father God, continue to order our steps, I actually continue to look over each person that is here on tonight, Father God, continue to crown their head with more wisdom and knowledge from on high. Father God, continue to keep us together when one will not fall without the other. I actually continue to bless our city, state, and our country, continue to bless our city administration, the mayor, his assistant right now, Father God, our police department, our fire department, all of our employees in the city right now, actually continue to bless this council, continue to bless their families, continue to bless their district, and continue to give us the tools and necessary things that we need in order to move this city forward. If ever of a time we need you, we need you right now. So we thank you, this heavenly Father, that everything will be done decent, order pleasing in your sight, we know that you are not the author of confusion, therefore you will get all glory, all honor, and all praise, because it all belongs to you. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. At this time, I ask that all active military and prior military veterans, please render the proper salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I'll ask for a approval of our November fourteen, twenty twenty three minutes of our meeting, please.
Make a motion to approve.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
And Councilman Leon.
Aye.
All right. Final adoption of ordinance, none. Introduction of ordinance.
An introduction of an ordinance to approve an annexation request by date, I'm sorry, by Brian DePaula, Z dash two zero two three dash one zero dash zero zero one two seven to annex lots five seven and five eight of I twelve Commercial Park, located on Lamont Drive, per survey by Roy Edwards Land Surveying, Inc., dated zero one zero two zero eight, to be zoned C dash H, District Three, recommended approval by the zoning commission, Lacy Landrum.
Dr. Landrum, before you move forward, quick announcement, please. Anyone that's here on these items, if you come up, you do have three minutes to speak. Please, when you come up, please give your name and address and speak clearly in the mic. These items that we're going through now are up for introduction. When they be introduced, there will be a public hearing set for that again. Also, you will have a time to speak at that time as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
As you can see on the map, which is probably the easiest way to understand this property, on the zoning map, which is your pink map towards the bottom of your packet, which is also linked online for those following. This owner currently owns the property that is to the northwest of the hatched property there, so, and what he's seeking to do is to pull that property that's just to the east of it into the city limits, so that it all kind of maintains that same line. It would be zoned C H, which is the surrounding zoning of the other parcels. His intention is merely to bring that business into the city limits and then to subdivide the lots to add additional parking. Right now, Scott's Pharmacy is the lot to the southwest of this one, that may be a little bit more of a landmark for you in terms of getting your bearings. This was unanimously approved, recommended in favor by the zoning commission after a public hearing was held on November ninth.
Is there anyone here on that particular item? Any questions or concerns from anyone from the council? Okay.
Make a motion to introduce.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Introduction number two.
An introduction of an ordinance to approve an annexation request by James Marshall, Z dash two zero two three dash one zero dash zero zero one two eight, to annex zero point seven four seven acres, located on Tranquil Trace, per survey by Max Bowden, Inc., dated ten zero five two three, to be zoned R M dash two, District Four, recommended approval by zoning commission. Dr. Landrum?
The property owner here, Mr. Marshall, is seeking to annex this parcel in. It is a single parcel right now, but his intentions is to split it into three parcels. Again, for your reference, and probably the easiest way to understand this case is by looking at the zoning map itself, you'll see that all the surrounding zoning and the included recommended zoning for this parcel would be R M two. Although that zoning does allow duplex, the owner has indicated that he wants these to be single-family lots, and that would match what is surrounding this area. You can also see that the widths match the current lots and that pattern of zoning in that area. There was some discussion at the public hearing on November ninth with one homeowner saying, you know, I really hope that these are going to be homes, and he did affirm again on the public record that he did intend to make these into single-family homes.
This is my district. I haven't been reached out by this group, and there's some concerns, and it's a big decision right here to be taken in, so I would like to table this item till later on, after the holidays, maybe in January. I make a motion to table this item.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Introduction number three.
Introduction of an ordinance to approve a rezoning request by Jeremy Sims, Z dash two zero two three dash one zero dash zero zero one two six, to rezone three one one North Holly Street, per survey by McLenn and Associates, Inc., dated zero six zero eight zero nine, from R S dash five to M X dash C, District One, recommended approval by Planning and Zoning Commission. Dr. Landrum?
Tonight, we have a case in almost every district. This one is in Councilman Andrews' district. This property has actually functioned as a multifamily dwelling since nineteen ninety two. There are three units that are in the main house, and there's one accessory dwelling that's in the back as a separate unit. This new property owner, Jeremy Sims, bought the property, wants to make some improvements and everything, and that's when he came to realize that it was not in zoning compliance with the functionality of how it's been operating. So, again, your zoning map may be your best helper on this case. The property in question is hatched out in red there. You'll see next to it, to the west, is mixed commercial, to the north is a mixed commercial block. This would finish out that block in terms of the mixed commercial. To the northeast is light industrial, and then to the east and to the south of this is, single family, is R S five. So there was one comment made at the public hearing by a property owner who really did not want this property to become into retail use. Jeremy Sims agreed again that this is not what his intent is. His intent is just to continue the multifamily use. This would be bringing it into conformity with that as an allowed use. It would open the door for additional uses.
Anyone from the public here on that item? Step to the mic, please, give us your name and address.
My name's Jeremy Sims, three eleven North Holly Street, sir, so I'm the one doing the petition. Other than just making an introduction of myself, and I understand that this moves into the next meeting, when we'll have the opportunity to discuss that for subject to questions or anything like that. Just the whole street in that three hundred block was owned by Mr. Hogan, which I'm not his, and all of those same properties are in that same usage. It just seems we got skipped in twenty fourteen when they updated the C, so we're just trying to get it back in lines with that. So, look forward to talking with y'all in further discussions next meeting, subject to questions.
All right.
Thank you.
Anyone else? I make a motion to go ahead and introduce.
Councilman Andrews.
Aye.
Councilman Divatario.
Aye.
Councilman Leon.
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Aye.
Introduction number four.
Introduction of an ordinance to approve an expanded conditional use request by Wade Powell and Carrie Vineyard, Z dash two zero two three dash zero nine dash zero zero one two five, for the location of seventy nine Whitmore Drive, zoned R S dash eleven, to allow for the use of group living. This is in District Five with the following conditions. This is a personal right and expires upon a change in ownership of the property from the person originally granted the conditional use, or from the tenants of the property being H two O Ministries. Number two, the group living use is for a transitional living program for youth. Number three, the group living use must remain in compliance with state licensure. Number four, there can be no exterior signage. Number five, there can be no retail sales. Recommended approval by the zoning commission. Lacy Landrum?
This case went through two different public hearings, first on October twelfth, and then a second meeting on November ninth. At both of those meetings, there was a full house. There was lots of discussion about this property, both from the people who wished to have the expanded conditional use, and from the Whitmore and Woodbridge HOA groups, and the residents of both of those neighborhoods. In your packet is included a summary of all the comments. It's a lengthy staff report, so all the comments that were both for it or against it, along with kind of the show of hands that was taken, and then the final vote, it was recommended approval by the zoning commission for this very, very restricted use. This current zoning of R S eleven is for single-family residential. It does not allow group living, and that's why this case is now before you. It would be to extend that single use of group living, and then with the additional conditions that came out of the zoning commission meeting. There is a lengthy description of the type of group home that's being proposed, and the different, I guess, processes and procedures that they use, and how they staff the home and those things. Also in your packet is included the correspondence that we've received from people in the area, and then on the final page, you have a zoning map that shows you where this is located within the single-family residential, and then they would have to be over several parcels into the R M three. That's the first zoning classification that allows for group living already. There is not, to be clear, though, a group home that is currently operating in Whitmore.
There is not, you're saying?
There is not. Not to our knowledge. There may be one that's not permitted, but there's not to our knowledge.
Is there anyone from the public here on this item? Yes, step to the mic, give us your name and address, please.
Don Lee, I live at thirteen Selman Avenue, and of course, I'm opposed to this, and I feel like it's just getting shoved down our throat. But I want to ask a few questions, because I think that this is important, that everybody look at it from the perspective of at least some of the residents in the neighborhood. And that is number one. Who makes the zoning regulations? Is it the city council? Who makes the zoning regulations? Who came up with these rules?
The zoning.
Is it the city council?
Zoning has to be approved by the city council.
Okay, I believe it is the city council, okay. So, these are rules that you guys made, or that whoever was before you made. Now you want to break those rules, you want an exception to those rules. Why were these rules made in the first place? Were they made to, so that, for the benefit of the residents who live there? Is that why they were made? Nobody has told me how this is supposed to benefit the residents in any fashion, other than kumbaya, we'll be doing our fair share to make the world a better place. Well, make the world a better place in a place where it's zoned to make the world a better place. This doesn't benefit anybody except a business, which is not what this zoning is for. It's not for businesses. I'll yield my minute and forty-seven seconds to whoever wants to say.
I'm Michael Doucette. I live on seven oh eight West Robert Street, and I am a former foster youth. I'm here tonight to speak potentially on their behalf. I lived in Whitmore Acres when I first moved here fifteen years ago, and I'm grateful that I lived in Whitmore Acres. I'm grateful that I'm in the community and active. I think that if we give an opportunity for people who were like me, who grew up with no home at all, the opportunity to have a home, and then a program in place for them to be able to be in a place where they can succeed in the city of Hammond, why wouldn't we support that? I'm a product of that. I'm a product of leaving southwest Louisiana on my own with no friends or family, living in Whitmore with some college buddies, who took me in and allowed me to live a life of opportunity and gratitude in this very city. And I live on seven oh eight West Robert now because of that. I've worked incredibly hard, where I've had support from friends and family in this community that allowed me to succeed, and I'd love to see our community support those that deserve an opportunity to be in a place where we can accept those that we usually reject.
Step to the mic, please, give your name and address.
My name's Carrie Rains. I live at seventy eight Whitmore, which is directly across the street. I moved here in two thousand and seven, because, and I did my due diligence, I looked for areas where there were no, I didn't want to live in an area where you could have anything other than residential. When I moved here, most of the people, well, here, I'll tell you, they moved there because they didn't want to have any different kind of housing. Now, we do have some back there, some apartments, but those were prior. The problem is, is, why couldn't they find somewhere else instead of coming to this neighborhood? That's a beautiful home. It's a beautiful home, and I just don't get it, and I'm gonna say something else. The other night, on a Wednesday night, I went to pass the group home where they're at now, and it was thirteen cars parked in front, and I got pictures. So I don't know if they were having a meeting, a church service, or whatever, but she said there wasn't going to be but one car, and they had cars parked all over the front yard, all on the side, up the driveway, and that was just on a regular night we went there. So, we don't, I don't want it, and I have strictly nothing against the people. I want a resident, I want somebody who's either gonna, excuse me, a homeowner, to be there. That's why we bought there, because we don't want to have people coming in and out, and it's going to be a constant turnover of people as these girls move on, new ones come in. So, I'm against it. I've talked several times at the meetings. There's no place for it, there's plenty of places in Hammond that are already zoned for that. They need to look for a place that was already zoned there. It's not right to shove this down these people that live in this neighborhood's throat, and that's what's trying to be done, so I appreciate your consideration.
Hi, I'm Carrie Vineyard, Riverdale Heights Road in Robert, Louisiana. I'm one of the directors of H two O Ministries. God led us to create a five oh one C three nonprofit located currently in Hammond, Louisiana, on Florence Drive. Our ministry helps provide support and housing for youth who have aged out of the foster care system, they're between the ages of eighteen and twenty-one. Our board has seven active members, which comprise of retired teachers, pastors, and a director from the Louisiana Methodist Children's Home. We've been housing young ladies since twenty twenty, and up until July, we have done so with just private funds. Since July, we've entered into a single service agreement with the state, which provides a portion of our funding. When foster youth turn eighteen, they are given the option now, as of the last couple of years, to join a program that's called Extended Foster Care, and they can be a part of that program till twenty-one. It's not a mandatory program. They can choose to participate in it. If they do, they can receive a stipend, but they will have to be employed full-time or in school full-time, or part-time working and part-time school. Because the state cannot mandate an adult to, as to where they will live, we are allowed as H two O to have our own vetting process. We have, through the years, developed a vetting process which allows us to have strict guidelines, such as curfews, random drug testing, and no on-site visitors, with the exception of their caseworker or us as a board and workers. We are their new family support system, offering them godly wisdom, transportation, and motherly love. And the cars were in the parking lot the other night, because as their families would also have family members over for Thanksgiving, that was our Friendsgiving with the board and the staff. God has been faithful in guiding and providing for us, and we desire to walk by faith through every opportunity He places before us. With that being said, we are requesting an exemption for conditional group living on
Hi, good evening. My name's Wendy Powell, four oh one two nine Rue Feray in Punchetula. I am the co-director with Carrie of H two O, and I know you've received a lot of information regarding our program, and there is a lot of emotion on both sides, and we understand their passion, and we certainly don't want to make enemies of any neighbors in Whitmore, and I hope they understand our passion, and that's all it is. I wanted to just explain a little bit about a typical day to you, and just give you a brief overview, so that you'll have an idea of what it would look like if we lived in this home. Our home looks like every other home on a street. There's no signage, it's operated like a regular home. Our girls wake up, a staff member's there, they're probably changing shifts. They go to school, they go to work, they come home, they go to tutoring, they go to the gym. We have, if necessary, if they're participating in it, we'll go to counseling, we'll go to church services, whatever it is. They prepare their meals, they go to the grocery store, they look like every other house on the street. On a typical day, if we're not having Friendsgiving, or Easter, or Christmas, you're just going to see one car, our ministry-owned vehicle, and another car. We do not add to the traffic on the street. We have a strict vetting process, we don't add to a safety, we're not a safety issue in the neighborhood. And I understand that that's a concern, but we have a legitimate, strong vetting process. We are not there, we value the safety of ourselves and our staff, too. We would not put people there, these women sleep there, we would not have them there in situations that are unsafe for them, and it's just not practical for the way our program runs and the cost of it, to have people there who aren't interested in moving forward, just as this young man was. Currently, our residents consist of one National Honor Society student at Punchetula High School who has been accepted to Southeastern and will be in the Honors College. We have an honor student at Hammond High who's in gifted art and will be attending a vocational program when she graduates. We have another one who is headed for a vocational program. We have a member of a girl who's currently in the Honors College at Southern, we went to her penning. Those are kind of what our girls look like. We do get the cream of the crop, because we get to pick the cream of the crop, and they're worth it, as you can see now, he's worth it. And I know to answer Mr. Carrie's question, and I know he feels like it's personal, we chose Whitmore because Whitmore is a diverse community, we serve a diverse group of girls. We wanted them to feel at home, where they had people that look like every one of them in their neighborhood. They have apartments there. As the girls aged out of our program and were able to live independently, we would have an opportunity for them to move into an apartment close by. We need our girls to be in close proximity of Southeastern, the VOTAC, work, the gym, tutors. If we move to where there is no zoning, the logistical nightmare that we would face, we can't do it, we can't get them where they need to be, and they will be, as they call it, nimby, not in my backyard, in every neighborhood we attempt to go in. This will be the understanding, the misunderstanding of what we're trying to do. It wouldn't matter if it's Whitmore, Belferay, you know, any of the nice neighborhoods in Hammond, we're going to face this. So my question is, why not Whitmore? Why not? Because this is also setting a precedent for what these foster kids will face in the future, of where they're welcome and where they're not. And my prayer tonight is just for your consideration to be strictly on who we are as a program, and the young women we serve, and not on anything that might come after us. And we appreciate your consideration, and I know this is difficult, and we thank you
Hi, my name is Rachel Gill. I live at three Edwards Place. The simple answer to why not Whitmore was stated earlier, that R S eleven does not allow group living. I ask that you don't merely consider the emotional appeal of a worthy ministry, but you also consider the people who live there and have already invested thousands of dollars in property, that would be an absolute nightmare to try to up and move to somewhere else that does respect their own zoning laws. Like many other homeowners who will be affected, I clearly oppose the introduction of group homes to Whitmore Acres. It is critical to note that denial of this variance does not leave H two O Ministries homeless. They already have a home that fits, I believe they said three, they wish to expand. That's why they're looking at Whitmore Acres. There are other locations that they could choose that do not require a variance. The approval or rejection of this expanded conditional use will set a legal precedent for how future requests for group homes are handled in our subdivision. A refusal to permit group living regardless of the merits of the organization requesting such a variance allows us as homeowners to maintain a blanket refusal in all group home cases. It means that I won't have to find a babysitter to watch my kids while I attend two zoning meetings, a city council meeting, another public hearing, and who knows how many after that. It means that I can focus on doing my job, confident in the fact that the city council will do theirs. There is an implicit agreement between There is an implicit agreement between a citizen and their government. I purchased a home within an area with zoning restrictions with the expectation that this council would keep those restrictions in place. I don't gamble with my own money, or my safety, and I ask that the members of this council, please do not gamble with my money or safety either. If you do wish to support group homes, this one or others, please do so in a manner consistent with existing zoning restrictions, and do not ask the homeowners of Whitmore Acres to bear the cost of your benevolence. It's not charity when you're risking someone else's money, it's my property values that I'm speaking about. It also doesn't matter if you personally feel that allowing group homes into a neighborhood is a risk. What matters is that the people in this room, the people who attended these zoning meetings, do feel that it's a risk, and they have made that very, very clear. Your risk assessment shouldn't be imposed on me or the other Whitmore residents, it should be sufficient that the current residents do not want this group home or any other group home in the future. Please set the precedent that group homes are not permitted. Ministries should attempt to locate property in properly zoned areas of the city rather than demand in however kind of voice that existing property owners accept new standards on the property that they already own, property that we invested in with the implicit understanding that the city government would enforce its own rules. If you approve a Christian organization's home for young ladies who have aged out of the system, exactly what argument would you use for a group home for troubled teens, or recovering addicts, or any other group home without such a strong vetting process? Because the majority of arguments that you could present would likely land you in a federal lawsuit, that you would almost assuredly lose. The sole argument that avoids such a risk is, the area is not zoned for group housing of any kind, and no group housing has ever been approved. Please vote against this expanded conditional use, the residents don't want it, thank you.
Hello, my name's Lucas Burge, I live at twenty-three White Drive. Well, the timer's gonna start on me, it wasn't starting the other ones, and I gotta hurry up. I, um, I live at twenty-three White Drive, uh, bought a house about ten years ago, Sam sold me the house in the neighborhood, and he told me how nice it was. Um, my kids go to lab school with all these kids. Mr. Steve, you worked with my, uh, mother-in-law and father-in-law, I think my father-in-law spoke with you. Um, anyways, I'm trying to be as quick, I got two thirty. Um, so, when I was buying the house, I, I was looking for a residential neighborhood, I was looking for something close to downtown, uh, I found it in Whitmore. Um, I knew about the apartments, I'm in, was in law enforcement in Baton Rouge, P D, I work for the state police now. So, I know about, you know, the, I knew what was going with the apartments, the apartments are fine with me. Um, the reason I, I, I don't want a group home is, I bought in a residential neighborhood, I bought in RS eleven, I, I, you know, I, 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 I don't understand, where was it? I don't understand, uh, the, the, what the, 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 the government at the, of the Hammond City Council at the moment, my representative is Mr. Steve. Um, we have a majority of people in the neighborhood who are against the, the group home. Um, I, I'm not sure, we, we elected Mr. Steve to represent our, 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 our voices. Um, at, at this point, Mr. Steve has made it clear that his point is, that he's in support of the group home. Um, I, I, i- if we voted somebody in, and he's not, and, and, and we're not being represented, I'm not sure what the point of a representative-based government is. Um, on, on another note of that is, uh, we're trying to make an exception to the, the rules here of the, of the, um, of the zoning. Um, I'm not really, I, I don't know why we would choose to make an exception just for this one, uh, like the last speaker spoke out about. Once you make one exception, it's hard to go back on the other exceptions. Uh, you, you can't really justify, well, denying somebody else after the fact. Um, but I am opposed to it, I, 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 I have nothing against the people, I'm sure they're very nice, uh, my mom has been a volunteer at the Restoration House for thirty years, you've probably seen her walking around the neighborhood, uh, downtown, because she doesn't drive. Um, but she gets there every day, and she volunteers every day over there. So, I understand the, the, the strife of the young ladies, and I, you know, I wish them the best, I just don't, I don't, I'm, I'm just not, uh, in favor of it in, in our neighborhood, and it's nothing against them, um, thank y'all.
My first concern is, the last time we were here, which was a zoning committee, the attorney spoke up and said, "We're not gonna go in here and look, see what these people are doing, we don't go in homes, we don't check, and no one for the city checks to see." So, if you put stipulations on it, what's gonna happen if they violate those stipulations later on? And also, who's gonna find out, who's gonna report it? Is there anyone that does that? Because I've never seen them. Now, see, all kind of violations, we don't report them ourselves, and then, a lot of times, even when you report them, nothing happens. We've had houses in our neighborhood that were just sat there for years, um, finally, it was just solved for taxes, the only reason why is finally something being done to it. Uh, it had a hole in the roof. So, once violations occur, it's not like you can put all the stipulations you want, it's not gonna matter, because you got nobody to enforce them, and no rules to enforce them with. Thank you.
My name's Jim Elaine. I live at, uh, forty-one Laura Drive. Once upon a time, I sat where you are. I don't know what the name of your, uh, council is, but mine was the Variance Committee. And during that time, we had people come to us with requests for certain variances on zones. The zone is set up for specific purposes. And if the people that are being directly affected by a zoning change do not want that zoning change, it matters not what the reason, as well as these people have recommended it to us, if the local folks had a problem, that carry.
Good evening, my name's Deborah Swenson, I live at twelve Ravenwood Street in Woodbridge subdivision. Um, I do know, uh, I had spoken with Carrie on the phone at one point, that they just, Mr. Figurino bought the house, he didn't obviously check the restrictions in the zoning. Carrie said, though, you know, maybe they should have done this, and they didn't, so this has not been a planned-out type of thing. To me, it's kind of respectful to do those kind of things when you're coming into someone else's subdivision. I understand that, um, as far as Mr. Figurino bought the house, so they, maybe perhaps Carrie and her group did not know about it, but I just consider that to be respectful of when you're trying to move into or do something different in someone's neighborhood. One of the things I, um, wanted to say, ritterate to the gentlemen, um, I don't know that you've been at any of, of our other meetings, but we do all respect the purpose of this ministry. However, we ask them that they respect our purpose and what we have in our neighborhoods, and, um, I know ordinances are different than restrictions, I'm a legal secretary, so I, I understand that, and I understand that y'all are to do the ordinances, but, you know, there are zoning restrictions. Um, the other thing I just wanted to say very quickly is that I have challenged y'all before, and I'd like to challenge y'all again, that when you review this, and then when the vote comes up, that you all are reviewing this and voting from our constituent perspective, not from your personal opinion or perspective. Thank you.
One thing, one, one thing that I will agree with you on is that when a lot of folks are buying their property, they do not check those restrictions, and that's normally one of the biggest things we face coming before us.
And I don't know if Sam has any information on this, but from what I understand, it's a requirement of the legal, the real estate person, and maybe it's not on them, but I wish we could, and that may be some rabbit I'm gonna chase to, because I'm chasing the flooding rabbit right now, but of who is actually responsible to let the buyer or seller both know of this.
Well, what? What? Whoa.
And we've had many occasions in our subdivision where that has not happened, not from you, I'm just saying.
Well, no, I, I agree with you to say that, but prior to this, we had a, had a car lot issue with someone I was trying to, that bought a piece of property, we wanted to put a car lot in a residential area, and it came up to us time and time after again. And I went back and looked, it was clearly on the remarks, the zoning, residential, and it had everything on there that clearly stated that it was not a commercial lot, the zoning was on there, and it was a residential lot. Bought it anyways, and we wanted to go ahead and put a car lot on there, you know? You just can't buy property and do what you want on it, and if the zoning's against it, just say whatever, and it, it kept coming, and it shouldn't have even been up there, it kept coming to us, kept coming to us, and it was, you know, it, it was like help with the administration, trying to show them what to do, or, or whatever, it just kept coming and coming and coming, and they didn't want it, we had to keep on talking about the same issue over and over and over, it was in residential. A list of conditions on this deal, who's gonna enforce it? Like the judge said earlier, I mean, it's, it's a list of stuff, why create a problem?
Right, right, thank you.
My name's Renee Lee, can you hear me? My name's Renee Lee, and I live at thirteen Selman Avenue, Hammond. And, um, last meeting was brought up that if this would be approved for them to, to come in, then who's to say that it wouldn't happen again and again and again? And reinforcing that is what she had said, they picked Whitmore because of the convenience of the school, the convenience of, um, being able to rent the apartment after they're out of the program, and all these conveniences. Who's to say then, if it, if it was successful, who's to say that they're not gonna want to open up and buy another piece, another home, and do the same thing? Because it's a, it's a big neighborhood, and there's homes that are coming up, you know, people pass, and people wanna sell their homes, and who's to say that, that, that would not happen over and over and over again? That's my, I'd like you to think about that, too. Thank you.
I just have one more thing to say, because in the planning committee, mission, um, meetings, um, the group home ministry was concerned about all of our fears. I just want to say, we're not fearful, we have good, uh, wisdom and discernment about the situation, and it's not about fear, it's about, you know, educated and, and, you know, valuable concerns, so I just wanted to say that.
Hi, I'm April Foster, um, at sixteen Selman Avenue. Just a couple of things that I was kind of listening to, uh, I am for the housing, um, to be approved, the zoning, or not zoning, the conditional use to be approved. So, interestingly, um, I am part of the Facebook community group, um, that we have for Whitmore Acres. So, we post things in Woodbridge and in Whitmore Acres in the community Facebook page. Um, there was a flyer and, and signs. Um, are you, are you on the, are you on the Whitmore Acres Facebook page?
Ma'am, ma'am, address your statements this way.
So, there was a flyer posted in, on, on the Facebook page yesterday, and I didn't get it, everybody got it in their mailbox, but I didn't get one in my mailbox. Um, I did stand up last time and say that I was for this. I have been watching the Facebook group, I haven't been talking in it, I haven't been making any comments, but I have noticed in the Facebook group, there have been multiple people that have been in favor of this group home. At the bottom of this flyer that I did not get in my mail, which says, "Please attend the city council meeting to oppose group housing, um, coming to seventy-nine Whitmore Drive, this home is going to be rezoned as a commercial property." I just want to ask the council if that is accurate. Is that accurate?
That's not accurate.
Okay. So, um, this flyer also says it's going to be modified with a sprinkler system, cabinets will be lowered, a ramp will be installed, et cetera. Is that accurate? According to whatever it is that they've said in this, is that, is that accurate? We don't know at this time? Okay. "Once this is done, this home will always appeal to a business." Is this being approved in any way, shape, or form as a business? I'm asking the council.
I believe it's a nonprofit business.
Okay. Is it true that this prof, this nonprofit organization, that there can be no retail sales?
That's one of the restrictions on here.
That was, that was what was agreed upon at the, at the zoning meeting.
So, it's, um, it says here on this flyer, I'm just trying to get the accuracy of the flyer that was put in people's mailboxes and posted on the Whitmore page. Um, "It will never be a single-family home again."
It's not accurate, no one knows what it's gonna be.
Okay. "This will start a precedent for future group housing." Has there ever been housing for group homes in Whitmore Acres?
To my knowledge, there was a group home in Whitmore for a number of years.
So, this isn't setting a precedence, this has already been, um, approved in the past, okay?
To be accurate, it wasn't approved, it didn't need approval, because it was a group home for people with disabilities, which needs no approval anywhere, any shape or form.
Okay. Um, "We will not be able to stop more group homes from moving in once this is approved." Is that, is that true or false?
Absolutely, it's true. They have, it is not, they would have to come through this same process, and the planning and zoning would go through their same process, we would go through, and we would go through this process. Every case is handled, every case is handled independently.
Okay. So, please contact the filing councilman to oppose this. Sam Divatorio, Devon Wells, Kip Andrews, and then it has, uh, city council and the address and the, the time. Call to oppose. If you, if you're not attending this meeting, you are voting for group living in Whitmore. And I just want to point out that there are hundreds of homes in Whitmore, and that mostly people who do not come to a meeting are for. So, there is a very small representative group that are here tonight that are against this. And I just want to say that, Steve, that, that you're, that they're saying that you're not representing us. Well, you're representing me, and you're representing many of the people that have called you, that have emailed you, and that have put things on Facebook that says, "I'm not opposed to this." So, unfortunately, I'm the one who stands here for it, and I'm going to probably pay later, so thank you for your time.
My name's Jesse Goudy, excuse me, I live at forty-two Laura Drive. I'd like to question the comments you've just made, that this will absolutely not lead to more approvals of homes. If you approve this one, what's gonna stop you from approving the next one?
Has to go through an approval process, like any...
This is the approval process, you're hitting it up. I'm asking you a question, what's to stop?
It's an expanded conditional use, it doesn't transfer.
I understand that, I understand that, but if you approve this one, what's to stop you from answering my, eh, question?
What's to stop us from not approving it?
Pardon?
What's to stop us from not approving the next one?
Well, approving this one indicates to me that the chances are you're gonna approve the next, you might not be voting on the next.
I hope not.
Now, on this lady's comment, that she prays that you make your decision based strictly on their needs, that's a pretty greedy prayer.
It is, it is.
We don't have any needs, in her opinion. We don't have any needs, in her opinion.
Yes, you did.
That's all.
Mr. Leon, I don't think it's fair for any of us to speak for the constituents who aren't here voicing either for or opposed. I'm sure that you get many calls and emails, can you let us know what the view of your constituents is? And what you have heard from them, is it overwhelmingly for or opposed?
I think the purpose of this meeting tonight is an introduction, so that we can have a fair and balanced discussion at a public hearing. And that's all I'm asking, and that's all I'm asking for. There's a lot of people that are not here tonight because they're knowing that we're not voting for, it's not a public hearing. It's, it's an introduction. So I think to be fair for everyone, we need to have, we need to have the introduction. To answer, to specifically answer your question, I have gotten about the same number of fors and againsts, it's about 50/50.
Okay, Andre, would you take a moment and explain where we are in the process for the people in the audience to understand?
Yeah, so the process for an ordinance by the council requires an introduction of an ordinance at a meeting. That requires a vote of three council members to introduce it. If introduced, then it comes up for a public hearing, typically at the following meeting. And then the public hearing is an opportunity for folks to say all the reasons why they're for or against. And then typically at that meeting, later on the agenda, there's a vote, whether to adopt or not, adopt the ordinance. So it's sort of a three-step process. Introduction, if introduced, a public hearing at the next meeting, typically at the next meeting. And then typically at that same meeting, a vote to adopt. So it's a, it's a three-step process for an ordinance with the council.
So to be clear, a vote tonight doesn't deny it or approve it, it just puts it on the next agenda.
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure everybody understands that, a lot of people don't come to these, they miss that part of it.
December 12th.
The 12th.
And if there anyone else?
I have a question. If it becomes approved, and they have, they have the home, and it's successful, and if they, if the organization purchases another home in our neighborhood, will they have to go through this again?
Yes.
Unless it's in one of the very limited spots that is RM3, I believe, which allows group home. So if it's in the zoning that doesn't allow it, you have to get rezoned or conditional use like this.
Right, what I'm saying is, if it's in our neighborhood.
Right, but there's parts of your neighborhood that do allow group homes, the zoning.
Where's that?
Do you want to put the map? It's closer to the apartments. It's technically in Whitmore, so.
Okay, but if it's not, if it's not in the zoning, but they've.
All the way to the right. This area right here that is RM3 already allows for group living. All of this, that's RS11, does not allow for group living. It has to go through the process of going to the meeting through planning and zoning. Just like, I'm sorry, we have lots of people talking tonight. But just like when you came to the earlier meeting that was, that was at nighttime before, that was the planning and zoning meeting, they make that recommendation, and whatever the recommendation is, whether they're for it or against it, it comes to the city council. And then the city council considers it like they're doing tonight, for an introduction at one meeting, and then it goes to the second meeting for another public hearing and potential vote that night.
Okay, so therefore, if they're approved, and it's the same, I'm just making sure, it's the same organization, the same group, and they buy it and purchase another home, and they want to extend it like they're doing now, they'll have to go through the same thing, which there wouldn't be no reason why y'all would disapprove it. That's my point, that's the point we're trying to make, that's all we're trying to make, it opens the door. Thank you.
So the other thing that could happen if this isn't approved, is that my concern is that the owner of that house will rent it out to about five college students, and then there will be no control, and there will be cars, and there will be garbage cans left out, and there will not be any stipulations or circumstances for you guys to follow like it is on here. We fight it already on Selman Avenue, we have three homes that are rented to college students, and it's a very frustrating situation, and so I would rather have this, this one with all the stipulations, and have all these guidelines that have to be followed, versus the owner who is going to rent it to college students because of the convenience, right down the street from Southeastern. You know, this guy even said, I love the fact that he was, you know, a foster kid, and he gave a great, you know, testimony, but he also said he was living with five other college students or whatever, and, you know, it's happening all over Whitmore, and we can't control that. I would much rather see three orphans, 18 years old, supervised with drug trusting, than to have five college students that have beer parties all night long in that house. And he has the right to do that under the zoning that he bought the house in, and that frustrates me, so that's what I.
Anyone else?
I'm not going to be before you long, my name is Ivor Amaker, and I live at 28 Marty Drive, which is in Whitmore subdivision. I'm the VP of Affordable Housing for East Baton Rouge Parish Housing Authority, and I just want to bring this to your attention, and I'm sure you probably already know that HUD made available $30 million in funding available to public housing agencies to help youth aging out of foster care. And my standing up here is just to say that this is going to be an ongoing issue. This is not going to be something that's going to be short-term. So we need to be able to, as a community, tap into funds that will help the youth fostering, you know, aging out of foster care. And so the group home, while I'm not opposed to anybody having affordable housing, it seems like a temporary fix to me. I think this agency should tap into federal dollars and actually maybe build a subdivision or an apartment complex where they can have resources, they need job skills, they need to become, they need to know how to become viable citizens. And having a group home with six people, a house manager coming in and out every now and then, I think we're defeating the purpose in helping them. They need access to resources. And I think if we, these are federal dollars, taxpayer money, we need to tap into this money, it's available, help these developers develop a place for these youth, so that we can really help them, and just not a short-term fix.
I welcome anyone to go look at our website to see what we do, but H2O, basically, we are a complete support system for our youth. We offer transportation, we offer job skills, life skills, and things such as that as well. We're a work in progress, but that is what we attempt to do, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I haven't heard anybody say anything that's going to benefit the residents of Whitmore Acres. Nothing, nothing. I heard one resident from Whitmore Acres who's in favor of it. And I just, I don't understand how this benefits anybody except the business that wants to locate in our residential neighborhood. That's it.
All right, anyone else, okay, pleasure to the council?
Well, I think that, I think that, I will say it again, there's a lot of people that are not here tonight because it was just an introduction, there's passion on both sides of this. I think it would be fair to the council to hear both sides, to make sure that everyone that lives in this area understands that we are coming up for a vote, and they can make their presentation for or against, and the council can get, can get, the council will make their vote. There is a lot of false information that has been distributed and passed around out there. I think it's only fair to the public, and fair to the residents of Whitmore, that a public hearing is held where accurate information is presented, and that we all absorb that and vote on that accurate information. And with that in mind, I'd like to make a motion to introduce.
Mr. Leon, you represent all of these people here, supposedly represent. They were all these people, but how many of these people are actually residents of Whitmore? If you, can I say something, if you, if you, raise your hand if you're from Whitmore, and you're against this. The people that you're talking about, there's three or four couples just next door to me, they don't come out after dark, they're scared, they're elderly, and most of them are against this, they just can't make it here. But you look at how many of you, the majority, the people over here, some of them work for this company, they don't even live in Whitmore. Why should they even have a say-so what happens in Whitmore? That's, to me, it's crazy. They bring all these people, that's great, I think they got a good deal, but they don't live here. We, you, you were elected by these people, and I voted for you, I'm sorry I did, but I voted for you. And I will run against you in the next one. But it's not right, these people, they're all these people, they don't even live in this subdivision, some of them, but she just said she lives in Rockland. She has a living hand. Y'all need to take consideration to the people here that live in this subdivision, that this is fixing to be pushed on, and let, and listen to what they say, not what these people are saying who don't live here. That's just a job for them, or a ministry for them, that's great. But they don't live in the subdivision, and we keep having these things where they pop up, but they don't live there. And as far as we went over all of this stuff last week, about the last night meeting, they said it was going to be one vehicle. And I'm telling you, it wasn't the Thanksgiving, it was three weeks ago, but I had 12 cars parked in front of the house they own. So all of these things, we're just, I'm not against the group home, I'm against changing the zoning, that's why I bought my house, I have a beautiful home, I just paid it off, and that's why I'm so upset about it, because it's going to bring the value down on my house. Nobody's going to want, when somebody moves the next time in that neighborhood, or passes and something, they're not going to want to buy it because of the group home. They don't know, they just know it's a group home. And that's what's going to be the problem, and the only people that come along by is another person who wants to put another group home in another one. Notice they didn't put it in their neighborhoods. So I think you should, but take into consideration, half these people on this side don't even live here there. I think you should ask how many live there, and see exactly what you're talking about, how many actually live with the subdivision, thank you.
I just want to say that I think what they're doing in ministry is a great, great, you know, initiative and organization that's needed in the community, and I think it's, you know, the passion's there, and I'm glad that y'all in the community. You know, there's places that are zoned for group homes currently right now, I think that might be where, you know, may need to start looking. You know, the restrictions prohibit this use right now, and then there's a lot of opposition on it, and I think everybody needs to consider the mood and the wants of the actual citizens in the area, and that are living there, and respect that. And there's plenty of places that are, there's plenty of places that are zoned for group homes, and would be great, great for this. And so, yeah, that's, I just wanted to make that clear, that, you know, just because it's a good cause don't mean you just go do what you want, and it's a great deal, you know? There's rules and regulations you have to abide by, and I mean, I think that's, that's what we need to look at, you know? And that's all I have to say about that, so, thank you.
Again, we have a process, and the process that has been told to the community that's out there is that we would do an introduction tonight, and that we would have a public hearing at a later, at a later, at the next, at the next council meeting. I think to be fair to both sides, we need to follow through with that process, and have a public hearing so that both sides can give whatever, you know, whatever rationale they have, for or against. And I think that's, I think that's the fair, I think that's the fair thing to do. Tonight was for introduction, and that's our process.
Let me just say that in the six years this council has been up here, all of the introductions we've made, I can think of one time we did not introduce something. It has been pretty much a policy of this council that we introduce everything, because people then come to the public hearing and actually tell us what they want. There are people who are not here because they know there's going to be another meeting, and that's the meeting where we're going to vote, that's the meeting that we need to come and say something to. But in between now and two weeks from now, that's the time I'm going to send my emails, and I'm going to call all these people and tell everybody, appreciate that you're all here today. I'm going to second the motion to introduce, because that has been a policy for six years, that we introduce just about everything. And the vote on introduction does not mean that's the vote when we vote. It just means we want to hear everyone come and talk about it at a public meeting.
That's correct.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divotario?
No.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Public hearing is scheduled for December 12, 2023, on all of the introductions from tonight.
I need you to step to the mic, name and address, please. Oh, I'm sorry, did you hit that little button, make the green light come on?
Okay, can you hear me now? All right, Heather Dykes, 9 Selman, this is the fourth time that we've been here on this issue. We do have a lot of elderly residents in our neighborhood that we have to actually go to their house and let them know what's going on. So a lot of people, you know, do think that tonight is the night, and, you know, it's a, it's a big subdivision, you know what I'm saying? And there's a lot of elderly people that don't drive after dark, and they're.
Probably don't email either.
No, they don't, they don't email, they don't do Facebook. And I haven't talked to a single person, you know, that is not, that is far the group home. So I've been around, you know, the majority of the residents in our subdivision are against, against it. And it is work on our part, you know, to go around and inform everyone, you know? So the more, it's almost like, you know, how many more meetings is it going to be?
I get that, the flyer that was sent out was not very clear, didn't tell people, it made it sound like that this was going to be the vote. This was never, it's not even possible if we wanted to vote on this tonight, like, our laws would not allow us to.
So the December 12th, is, what are the odds of y'all voting on it at that meeting?
I'd say pretty high, I mean, we continue things when we got to make a change to the ordinance, or the verbiage, or someone brings up a really, really good point, that we got to change something in it, and we then need more people to come and talk, I mean, we've beaten a dead horse here with this. I came to the public hearing, so, I mean, I know how much you guys have come to these things, but it's a process, and it's part of, it's part of government, right?
I just want to make sure I understand, so that I can relay the correct information, you know, when I go around again.
It's set for a public hearing on December the 12th. That night, we should vote on that particular item.
Gotcha, all right, thank you very much.
And I appreciate getting correct information out there, and it probably would have saved a lot of people from coming tonight, but that's okay.
Yeah, well, I think a lot of people, the people who are here tonight are here because they want to be here. They would be here anyway, regardless of whether y'all are voting or not.
Resolution, resolution number one?
Excuse me, a resolution to authorize the Hammond Regional Arts Center to serve, sell, or otherwise handle alcohol during the cocktail tasting. The event will take place inside the Hammond Regional Arts Center located at two-one-seven East Thomas Street as well as on the eastern half of Morrison Alley, Morrison Park Alleyway. Note, Art of Cocktail is hosted annually by the Hammond Regional Arts Center as a primary fundraiser for the organization. Activities include creative cocktail sampling, art displays, music, local and local food. Melissa Griffin.
I'm Melissa Griffin. I'm the executive director of the Hammond Regional Arts Center. As she said, this is one of our annual fundraisers to help us fund our mission to bring access to the arts to everyone in our region. When participants arrive at this event, they will be ID'd, given a wristband, and then the mixologist will provide them a two-ounce sample of their creative mixed drink. Then guests get to vote on those drinks and pick who's the best.
Okay. Anyone from the public on this particular item? Any questions or concerns from anyone from the council? Pleasure to counsel.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Resolution number two?
A resolution to grant a waiver of the City of Hammond's open container law to the Hammond Regional Arts Center during the cocktail sampling event, Art of the Cocktail, held on Saturday, February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, from six PM to ten PM. The event will take place inside the Hammond Regional Arts Center located at two-one-seven East Thomas Street as well as on the eastern half of Morrison Park Alleyway. Note, Art of Cocktail is hosted annually by the Hammond Regional Arts Center as a primary fundraiser for the organization. Activities include creative cocktail, sampling, art displays, music, and local food. Melissa Griffin.
Same event. Do you have any questions?
Anyone from the public on this particular item? Pleasure to counsel.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Resolution number three?
Thank you.
Thank you.
A resolution to authorize We Didn't Planet Clothing Company to serve, sell, or otherwise handle alcohol during the Planet in the Park event held on Saturday, January sixth, twenty twenty-four, from two PM to eight PM. The event will take place at Kate Square Park, two hundred West Charles Street. Alex Griffith.
How you doing? My name's Alec Griffith, two oh-nine West Robert Street. So, this is actually our second event. Pete personally signed off on the first one, which was in July of this year. So, for this one, it's basically just a clothing, music, and art festival for the public here, kinda similar to the farmer's market or the night market that we have here in Hammond. This is, just takes place in Kate Square Park. We have three live music performances to go out throughout to take place in the gazebo. We have twenty vendors of clothing, art, and food for the public that they'll be able to shop from as they're there to browse around. The music is free to the public, so it is just for anybody to come up and have access to. Last event, we did not have alcohol. So, this is just us trying to incorporate this. I'm personally not looking to sell it through We Didn't Planet. We're looking to bring on one of the bars, Red Right and Brew, Benny's, a licensed caterer with a license to sell alcohol, to be a part of the event if they're willing to come and be a part of it. It's not a guarantee that we're going to have alcohol. It's just, we'd like to have the option to explore those opportunities.
With alcohol, are you beer and wine? You talking about hard liquor?
Just beer and wine, yes, sir.
Beer and wine, okay. To eight o'clock. That seems a bit late.
Well, the other thing is, let me just make this comment. You need to, you need to have a licensed alcohol vendor if you're gonna provide that. So, that could be, if you're inclined to grant that, he's gonna need, he's gonna need a licensed alcohol.
Because, like, DDD, they get their own special event license.
And he'll also have to go to the ATC and receive the special event waiver. We talked about that.
The other one you did, was it from these hours, twelve to eight? Was it?
It wasn't till six-thirty. It wasn't until eight. We incorporated a little bit more music this time, so it's, it's not, the music doesn't end at eight. That's just when the booths are set to take down.
Tom, does the music in the park end seven, right?
And I can guarantee that, you know, all musical performances will be over by seven o'clock.
Okay. Well, if the music's over, then you should stop selling alcohol.
That can be fine as well. It's just for the vendors, if people are out. I'm not sure how long the Christmas lights are on. That's another question I had. How long those are gonna be set up in the park?
Those will be picked up.
Those will be cleaned, that park will be totally cleaned up by January sixth.
Okay, perfect. So, I guess the only other question is lighting, is if there will be all the streetlights in the park will be on for lighting or if I'll need to...
Now, the playground area is not lit because it's supposed to be closed at dark.
That's not included in the event. It's just the gazebo and their surrounding area on that side of the fence.
Okay. And the purpose of it is, what's your mission? What are you raising money for?
Well, I'm not raising my own, We Didn't Planet Clothing. It's my own brand. I know we, Hammond has been on the rise with a lot of new up-and-coming street culture and clothing brands and things like that. So, this is just me trying to bring a platform to these people. There's a lot of brands like myself. I don't have a store. This is an opportunity for us to pop up and have access to the public and allow the public to see who we are and that we're all here, kinda starting something else.
So, music to get people there and then retail, retail food trucks?
One food truck will be there. We're planning on having Nola Mia Pizza there. We have a couple of other options that are lined up if they can't come through. But otherwise, it's strictly clothing and art vendors, all local from Hammond to Baton Rouge, and a food truck and alcohol if we can make that work.
Just make sure that your food trucks know they still need to go through the city's licensing process. That's kind of a new process that has started this year. So, they're not part of, like, just because you get the waiver to have the event doesn't mean that they have the waiver to sell their items. They need to go through the food, food truck process.
Sorry. Lots of red tape with government.
Yeah. But if it's Nola Mia or some other folks like that, they, they know that whole process. And some of them may have even finished it. I don't know.
So, I think that in keeping with things that are already there, like the music in the park to seven o'clock, I'd like to see that this be only till seven o'clock, at least we're serving alcohol. And do we need to say beer and wine only?
You can put whatever conditions you want. You can change the time in your motion and you can put any limitations you want in the motion.
Okay. See if anybody else has something to say. I'll make a motion.
Anyone else? Anyone else from the public on this item?
Oh, yeah. I'll make a motion to approve to sell, serve, or otherwise handle alcohol, limited to beer and wine for this event from two PM to seven PM.
Second.
Is this your first one? Is this your first one here you said?
This is the second event. The first event, we didn't have any alcohol or anything like that. And I didn't know of all the recreational processes. And I went directly through the mayor's office for the waiver. So, this is the second one, just trying to get everything a little bit more officially.
Yeah. You just have to do, because of the alcohol, it has to come to us, but everything else is supposed to go through the mayor.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Resolution number two, I'm sorry, four.
A resolution to grant a waiver of the City of Hammond's open container law to We Didn't Planet Clothing Company during the Planet in the Park event held on Saturday, January sixth, twenty twenty-four, from two PM to eight PM. The event will take place at Kate Square Park, two hundred West Charles Street. Alec Griffith.
So, this is the same idea. It's just the open container. It's limited to the park, right? So, they don't get to go walking all over Hammond. And I guess we see if anybody has anything to say.
Anyone else from the public on this item?
So, I'll make a motion to approve the open container for this event, January sixth, from two PM to seven PM at Kate Square Park.
Second.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alec.
Resolution number five?
A resolution to accept the proposed health insurance package for calendar year twenty twenty-four. Henry Powell.
Henry Powell, one-ten West Morris, Hammond. Tonight, presenting you the renewal package for the employee benefits for the, all the employees of the City of Hammond as well as city court. Believe it or not, no rate increase this year. I think this is the second one in three years that we've been able to dodge the bullet. So, plan would remain the same. The rates would remain the same with, with no change. Secondly, we are making a change from the Benny card to a different card this year, which is gonna save the city a substantial amount of money for the administration of that. If you recall, last year, when we proposed funding the cards all up front, there was a concern that there may be some overutilization. We actually hit the number right on the head. Your employees were very prudent with how they used the cards. And we're asking that you approve the same funding as last year. We had predicted forty percent utilization. It came in at thirty-seven percent, which is about on par what it's been since we put the card in place. So, we're asking you to fund the cards exactly as you did before, with the twenty-three hundred up front for singles and the forty-six hundred for families. The dental insurance did receive a rate increase. However, we went to the market on that one and were able to get a better rate with Blue Cross Blue Shield, which did help you with your rates overall. It still did create about a ninety-five cent increase to the single rate. And a family would go up three dollars. All other benefits came in at flat, no rate increase, no change in benefits. So, overall, you're gonna see a savings of around a hundred thousand dollars because of the way we're gonna adjudicate the cards now moving forward. So, we're asking for approval for the package tonight.
Is there anyone from the public on this item? Any questions or concerns from anyone on the council?
Good job. Glad, glad there's no rate increase. That's wonderful.
We will have open enrollment if this passes tonight. Open enrollment starts tomorrow. We did provide save the dates to all the employees and to all the retirees and the city court employees and the marshals' employees.
Anyone from the public? Pleasure to counsel?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Councilman Andrews?
Aye.
Councilman Divatario?
Aye.
Councilman Leon?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Reports, mayor?
I hope everyone enjoyed their Thanksgiving with family and friends. Remember, the holiday season is upon us, so please, we're a busy city with folks enjoying our city, our restaurants, our stores across the town. So, please be vigilant, slow down a little bit. A lot of people crossing the streets. Watch for children. They'll be out of school. And have a great holiday season. Thank you.
Any council reports?
Food truck came up earlier. Lacey, who's, who's actually the one who, any violations or any kind of, you know, enforcement goes on? Or is that code enforcement or is that a permitting department? Or who's the actual head guy for that lady?
It can be, it can be three different people or three different entities. So, it depends on who sees what as they're out or who receives the complaint.
So, who is that? Can you, what's her name?
Code enforcement has taken up some of those. Pete Lantini, our building official, has taken up some of those. And then the police department has always taken up those.
Okay. So, the ones that are going around checking they got the permit right and everything's, you know, up to par with the regulations, that's...
We don't have people who just drive around the city all day.
So, who would, who would, I'm gonna ask it one more time.
Generally from...
Who, who, no, hold up. Who is the contact, person, name, email, if there is an issue in the city with a food truck?
Pete Panapinto. Panapinto, one of the school, p@hammond.org.
So, Pete, so, so you're, you're the head of the food truck department?
Well, that's, if that's a problem, and it has been at times and can be, I'm the one to make it happen quicker.
Okay. All right. So, I'll tell them to, to report to you whenever they, if they see any violation.
Or the mayor's office. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I wanted to know.
Any other reports? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Second.
Meeting adjourned.